Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the Gadsden City Council meeting on October 21st. I'd like to remind everyone, please make sure all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on Assistant City Clerk Jennifer Smith for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham is hopefully joining the meeting shortly. Councilman Smith is absent today. Councilman Avery?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra?
Here.
And Councilman Robinson?
Here.
We have a core in present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Keith Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, let's pray. Your heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your many blessings. We thank you just for the opportunity to know you, to serve you, in this great city. Lord, we pray as for your blessings on us, and certainly this meeting at hand, Father, we pray for the council, the mayor, all the employees and the residents. Father, we pray that you grant us your wonderful and very needed wisdom, guidance, knowledge, and discernment in every decision that's made, and everything that's said, and thought. Lord, we just pray that your will is done, that we never resist you, and that we wholeheartedly seek you and surrender to you always. We give you all the praise for all that you've already done and promise to do. Thank you for the faith in those things. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in council meetings held on October 14th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of October 10th through the 16th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item 7 is reserved for proclamations and commendations. Do we have any of those this morning from the administration? No? All right.
Mr. President, point of privilege here concerning that. I've been following, and I don't know if many of you probably have too, but the Gadsden City Titans JV Girls Flag Football Team has just completed an incredible season. I had shared some of the content of their quarterback, Ms. Alexis Wilson, who is incredibly impressive athlete. They have just completed their season undefeated, and if I am not mistaken, they were unscored on the whole season. I think they outscored their opponents this season, something like 375 to nothing. And so, they have completed the season, and have been awarded an area championship, and I think there's some postseason activity for them, too. I'm not sure how the flag football structure works, but if possible, I'd like to ask the administration if we could maybe potentially prepare a proclamation for them, and see if we could have them attend and recognize their achievements, because it was very impressive.
I wholeheartedly agree. We had planned on maybe reaching out to them after they win the championship.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. That is amazing. I don't know if anybody's ever done that before.
I don't think so.
Held your opponents to zero points.
And I'm telling you, anybody that may still be stuck in the past and think, oh, these just JV girls, you know, out there running around. I mean, these girls are athletes. They're running routes, taking, I mean, Alexis Wilson's dropping 35, 40-yard bombs down the field and catching these girls in stride. I mean, it is impressive to watch them play ball. So regardless of when, I just wanted to put that out to the mayor's ethos there, and hopefully, we can keep an eye on them and support them and get them in here for some recognition.
I support your idea. That's an excellent idea.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right. Item 8, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving alcoholic beverage license. This is for Half Throttle LLC, doing business as The Shack Bar and Grill, located at 3639 South 11th Street in District 6, has applied for a restaurant retail liquor license. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? All right, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And Mr. President, just for public clarification, if I may.
Yeah.
This is the old Sunset Golf down along South 11th Street. There, if you're going down I-759, you can see it off to the right. For a long time, it was a driving range down there. I just wanted to let everybody know where the location of that place was.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Item 9 is our next item, and at this time, the chair will entertain a motion to recess the council meeting in order to conduct the work session.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor for the recess, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries for...
All right, thank you. All right, we are at item 10 in our agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to reconvene the council meeting.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to reconvene the council meeting, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to reconvene.
All right, item 11 is unfinished business. We have none today. Item 12 is a resolution authorizing transition bonus agreement. This is to provide a bonus to dispatch employees with an attendance rate of 90% or higher during the transition period from Gadsden 911 to Etowah County Communications District 911, payable in three installments and a total amount not to exceed $5,000. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, just for the sake of the general public, as many of you who may have been keeping up with this know, we have, our 911 dispatching responsibilities and operations will be relocating to the Etowah County 911 Center, and those dispatchers are being compensated with a bonus as they navigate through that process of transferring from Gadsden Dispatch over to 911, Etowah County 911 Dispatch Employees formally. So that's just a compensation for everything they're having to go through during that transition process.
Anybody else have a comment? Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 13 is a resolution authorizing acceptance of East Central Alabama Highway Safety Office Grant. Funds will be used for traffic control, and the amount is $3,000. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 14 is a resolution. It's authorizing preliminary engineering and construction agreement with Alabama Department of Transportation. This is for bridge replacement on Hickory Street over Black Creek. The total amount is $3,493,600, and the city's share is $2,1,600. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, again, just for the general public to know, this is something that's very important to the residents of South Gadsden. The Hickory Street Bridge has been in a state of disrepair, honestly, for quite some time due to several factors. This is directly adjacent to the old steel plant property, and there's been a lot of different legal issues that have held up addressing this, but we are very thankful that the Alabama Department of Transportation has agreed to give us $1.493 million to help finally get this project done. So I want to thank the Engineering Department and the mayor for working through a lot of red tape with the federal government and the EPA Superfund Site that is the steel plant over there to navigate through this and get the funding that we need to get this bridge replaced. So thank you all very much for your hard work and effort on that. This is something that's very important to those constituents.
Anybody else? I want to echo those sentiments from Councilman Wilson, Mayor Ford, thank you, and Heath Williamson, thank you for your continued work and success with Alabama Department of Transportation with grants. We continue to receive grants and see them very often from Montgomery, so thank you for that work. That's a huge grant, almost one and a half million dollars. So thank you for your work down there. Appreciate it. Any others? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, item 15 is new business. I believe we have one item this morning.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, just one item today. This is requested from the Public Information Department, requesting a resolution authorizing the renewal of agreement with a program called REPT that we've been working with. Some of you guys may remember, we signed this agreement previously last year, I believe, maybe two years ago. Was it last year?
Last year.
This is a platform where citizens can come onto the city website and ask a question, and those questions are answered by city employees, or there's explanation given for the citizen or the individual who's asking the question that can point them in the right direction. As part of this authorization for renewal of this agreement, the company REPT has also added a new component, which is an AI component that is a chatbot essentially, where you can go in and ask a question of the city. Let's say if you have a question about a specific city ordinance, we're not going to say any one specifically here, but if you had a question about a specific city ordinance, you could type that question into this chat function, and that AI chatbot would try to scan through all of the city code, all the city ordinances that are already available on our website, and point you in that direction and provide you an answer. If that automated feature doesn't give you the answer you're looking for, you can simply reply with "This did not answer my question," and then it would go to the appropriate city employee who could expound and expand on that specific question to get you the answer that you need. So it's a really nice tool that frees up city employees not to have to answer the same questions over and over again, so they can focus on what all the taxpayers pay them to do, instead of answering the same question repeatedly for citizens. So this is, in my opinion, a great value at $12,000 a year. I mean, it's, there's no telling what it saves in actual man-hours, and it helps get the answers that citizens are looking for to them in a much quicker way. So if there's no objections, I would request that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business today, please.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution as an item of new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. Item 16 is department reports, committees, and boards. Do we have any of those this morning? All right, seeing none, we'll go to remarks by the mayor and the council. Mayor Ford?
Thank you, Mr. President.
You can get it started, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, members of council and president. Real quick, I just want to talk about our Oktoberfest, a huge success with the new sign up, the Ritz Theater sign, looked really nice. Dixie, thank you, Councilwoman Minatra, for everything you did in putting that on, and Brittany said it was just phenomenal. I was out of town, but I was able to do a video, acted like I was there.
Did a great job.
Yeah, but I heard that went really well. I saw some of the pictures. I think last year, we might have had 150, 200 people, and this year, she said there were probably 6, 7, 800 people. She couldn't, it was crazy. So great for that area, the town, and Wall Street, and really, really a great event. Very sorry to hear about Jerry's Pharmacy, Jerry passing away, that was really sad. His pharmacy's a staple on that road, and I know it'll continue on, but condolences to his family. Want to also talk about the Continue to Grow Gadsden. Tina just handed me this note, but I can't elaborate enough, but thank you to the council, and especially to the people for allowing us to do this. But a lot of the projects that you're seeing come before the council now are part of the bond, and it's just exciting to see. It's crazy. This morning, I went riding around, I had to go look at a pothole, and then I had to go look at a home, and then I came back, met with a developer, and it's crazy, all the stuff's going on in Gadsden, it's just, it's our time, and, you know, I told Tina, I said, you know, I don't know, we got to come up with a new acronym, but Grow Baby Grow, or Grow Gads and Grow, but it's our time, or something, but boy, it's fun. It's exciting to see. And prayers are with Steve Smith and his family. I know what he's going through, and I just told Bishop next door, I said, I got to get him that bed for the detached retina, so I'm going to go home and get it after this and take it to his house. So the prayers are with him and his family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Councilwoman Latham?
Thank you, President. Grow Baby Grow is hard to find. Anyway, I just want to kind of piggyback on the mayor with the Oktoberfest. It was awesome. It was great. And let me just say, sometimes it's very difficult to kind of get in front of people and give remarks and stuff, but I just want to give a shout out to Councilwoman Minatra. She did an excellent job with welcoming the people, and she and the mayor working together and all of the technology used to light up the sign, and it went off without a hitch. So congratulations on that, and it was a good time. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Councilman Avery?
Thank you, Mr. President. Want to give thanks to, on our event on last Saturday with our yoga and sip, we had a great attendance. Want to thank Raven Veezy, yoga instructor, for coming out, Ashley Goggins, who is our medical person that handles all of our kind of medical events in District 3 when we have them, and then sponsors Candy Factory, Gas Nutrition, and Naked Juice, and more importantly, the community that came out. It was a really good, well-deserving event as related to mental health and fitness, and that just, that whole energy. The good Lord blessed us with a beautiful day on last Saturday. The wind was perfect. Thank those persons that keeps the grounds at Carver. They was, everything, I mean, it couldn't have went any better. So I wanted to shout out to them for all of their participation and their hard work and efforts in that. With that being said, on next month, we will be conducting a Walk with a Doc, which is a, it's an event that is held around in many states. And so, we want to thank Dr. Etta and the Kidney Medical Clinic for being our head sponsors, lead sponsors for this event. And then we got our local man of that hour that is going to conduct the walk, and that's Mr. Lacy Robertson, who has participated in many 3, 5, and 10Ks in the Atlanta area for many years. And so, we'll do it there on Tuscaloosa, we'll meet at Carver Square, do it on Tuscaloosa Avenue. Both sides of Tuscaloosa Avenue have sidewalks, so we'll conduct it safely. We'll have instructions based on where the drainage project is being conducted at that time, because we know we got some street closures. But uniquely, that was a perfect time for the street to be closed for yoga in the park or in the square, because we didn't have a lot of traffic up and down. And so, that worked out well, but we'll update that with a map as we get closer to the event. So Walk with a Doc, I think we're looking at about three miles, and so, come one, come one, come all, and we'll keep you updated on the date and time. Community meeting, District 3 Community Meeting, Publicis Welcome, October 28th. That'll be at 5:30 at Carver Community Center. Please come. Lot of things to kind of just discuss and iron through. Also, on last week, which was a busy week again, want to thank the Head Start Policy Council and the board for the yearly training, and there are some other things that goes into this training, but want to thank all of those participants, those that sit on that board. This is a very important time for our young people, as, you know, the federal government is doing, still doing some cutting of, as it relates to the budget and things of that nature. And so, Head Start is one of those possibilities in the program, but we are continuously speaking with, I spoke with Tommy Tuberville on several occasions, I've spoken with Representative Butler with a project as well. And so, we're just keeping communication open as we continue to just kind of, you know, support these important programs in our community that are necessary and needed, that are here locally in our front and back door. Community meeting. That's it. I'll leave it there.
All right, thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilman Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of acknowledgements. First of all, again, I mentioned this during our work session, but the Gadsden City Girls JV Flag Football Team just finished their season undefeated. They outscored their opponents 249 to nothing in the season. They did not give up a single point in the entire season. And again, if you haven't seen Ms. Alexis Wilson throw the football for these girls, man, you are missing out. Anybody who thinks that these are just girls running around, playing, you know, playing around, these are real big-time athletes. I mean, this Alexis Wilson, I've had the pleasure of watching her grow up. Her mother worked at Back Forty Beer Company with us, and her father, Lee Wilson, of course, is a well-known doctor here in the area for NEO. This girl can throw the football 40 yards and hit an athlete running down the field on the fly, in stride, right on the numbers. I mean, you have never seen an athlete, boy or girl, this age, play football like this. It is so fun to watch. It's so exciting to watch. So congratulations to those girls for completing their regular season undefeated, outscoring their opponents again, 249 to nothing. I'm not sure what the postseason holds for them, if they have a championship, I'm sure they do, but regardless, at some point, mayor, I'd love to get those ladies in here for a proclamation, because it's seriously really fun to watch.
We could use her at Auburn.
I'm telling you. Trust me. Those conversations are already being had behind the scenes, I promise you. And speaking of, what we could also use at Auburn, that I am also working on behind the scenes, congratulations to my dear friend, Justin Mayo's nephew, and my dear friend, Summer Mayo Saul's son, Kevin Saul, or excuse me, Jason Saul's and Summer's son, Brady Saul's, who in last Friday's sound defeat of my alma mater, the Southside Crimson Panthers, kicked a 43-yard field goal for the Gadsden City Titans, and it had been good from 50. I mean, he banged it like it was nothing, and just trotted off the field like he had done it 100 times. So I'm looking forward to seeing him continue to develop as an athlete, too, and maybe we can get a former kicker from Auburn to make a few phone calls, because we could use one of those, we could use a kicker at Auburn, too, after last weekend. So congratulations to Summer Saul's and her son, Brady, on the 43-yard field goal, and congratulations to Ms. Alexis Wilson and the Girls JV Flag Football Team on an incredible season. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. Councilwoman Minatra?
I just want to echo thanks to our mayor for a great stand-in for the technology for last Thursday night's Oktoberfest, and it was great and a great turnout. And I also want to thank, as I watched the whole band, the jazz band from Gadsden State Community College finish, I started watching all the public works, employees that were coming down the sidewalk to clean up. So the next morning, the place was pristine, not one bit of litter on the ground. So they did an outstanding job, and I want to thank Tina for that team of people. They are well, they're so worth it in our city for all that they do. I also want to thank Ray Wetzel, who is our Museum of Art guru, and he made it happen, as Steve Reagan did for the sign, made it happen to light it, but also Ray Wetzel made it happen for the mural on the side of the Ritz building that you can see from Highway 431, that says they are the home of the Theater of Gadsden. So it's great, and a well, I just, it just lights up that whole block. This weekend is their Arsenic and Old Lace performance. It's Friday, Saturday, Sunday. It will also be the following weekend of October 31st and November 2nd, but you can go to the website for tickets. And then I want to make one other comment. The Family Success Center, which is located on East Broad, this Saturday from 11 to 1, they're going to do trunk or treat, and they're going to have a lot of games and a lot of candy for the kickoff to the Halloween season. So the Family Success Center for all that would be welcome to come on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, Oktoberfest was a hit. I got there a little late. Apparently, I missed this technology. Did they have you, were you up there like on a, how did this work? Were you?
I was on the John Tron.
Is that what happened? That was happened, I missed that. I got there a little late, but it was a great event. Congratulations, District 6, and Councilwoman Minatra. What was I going to say? I got off on that. We've had some situations, I was going to bring this up privately, but I'll go ahead, because I know the constituents want me to say something about it, because they blew me up yesterday. We've had some 18-wheelers up on Bellevue Drive like twice now in the last couple of weeks. I was going to get with the sign companies, see if we could get some no-truck signs. I know that's just a sign that goes up, and half the time, they get stolen, but somehow, these 18-wheelers are getting off into the neighborhood up there, and they got into the S-curve last night and knocked down, or knocked some power pole, some AT&amp;T lines, power lines now, and then our garbage city truck got tangled in them this morning. And so, that held all that up this morning, so when I left my house, the S-curve was still with police officers blocked off, and they were trying to get that rid. But I just don't understand, that's two times in a couple of weeks, those 18-wheelers are getting up there somehow. I don't know what's going on, but I was going to ask if the sign department could possibly get us some no-truck signs, fines $8,000 if you get caught up here, something like that. I had something else.
Mr. Mayor, we could probably fix that with a call to Restoration Hardware to get them to stop delivering all that expensive furniture up there to those houses on Bellevue.
Well, that's another thing, they do come, people, you know, they go on the social media app, and they like, you know, why are these trucks up here? But you're going to have to pick and choose what you want, because, I mean, occasionally, there's a delivery, I've seen Lowe's 18-wheeler trucks up there, I've seen Home Depot 18-wheelers up there. I mean, if somebody's moving, the moving trucks are up there, so I don't know how to stop that. You really can't stop that. And then plus, all the businesses own, you know, by the falls. I mean, we have delivery trucks for all the restaurants, Jax, Katie Thai, myself, Paul's Mountain Meat. So, I mean, there's going to be 18-wheelers up there, but like, you got to just, I mean, it's part of it, it's part of growing, but a lot of these people will go on social media and just be like, why are they, why can't we stop this? What are they doing up here? You know, like, what can we do to, you know, make it stop? You can't stop at all.
I want to do, if I could, take some of your time. I do want to put this in the atmosphere. I said it before at a meeting, there are some low-hanging barrier signs. If you go to medical facilities at UAB or sports events that, where you got to go into parking garage, there are low-barrier pipe that will give, whether it's 12, 5, 13, 6, whatever, so that you would know how high that barrier is before your vehicle hit, hit the structure of the parking garage or whatever. Just last week, an 18-wheeler was there in the S-curve at 8th Street.
Yeah, it was right behind that one.
It's very, very, very dangerous. This is my third time, I think, mentioning this. They've been up on 10th Street, and 10th Street is a very high pitch there, and where at some point, some of these trucks, their air brakes are going to give out. And the one down 8th Street was very close, and then there's some damage, and I meant to take a picture of it, I apologize, to see if we can get that barrier fixed there as well, because he kind of, he barely touched it. But if he would have ever gave away, those brakes would have bled, he would have been right there off, literally on the side of the mountain there. But nevertheless, it's on two poles, it's a line that goes across from each pole, and it hangs low, so where that 13, 6, I think, 18-wheeler and truck and trailer is 13, 6, they definitely, because those signs, even on 12th Street, where they do have the route to go to the restaurants and the stores, that is their route, 12th Street is. But 10th and 8th is not, but even 12th Street has the no-truck sign, and that's the route to go. And I even called Dollar General again and said, please take this 8th Street and 10th Street off of your route, because you're going to, I don't understand, they must not look at their budget, because they pay, I think, $3,000 to $6,000 every time, Kelton or any of those guys. or any of those guys kind of come out and, and move them, but it's very, it's very, very dangerous.
Well, I mean, maybe Councilman Robinson could share the contact information for the helicopter company you had to bring your furniture in up there? Like, maybe they could?
Councilman Wilson.
He lets me have the bridge, so I would have got the. Oh, he's letting me have it.
Yeah, I mean, the no-truck, and I know Highway two-eleven's a state highway, but, you know, but I know we do have the no, no-truck signs there just for that, you know, particular reason, just trying to keep them off, but I know legally, we cannot, that's what I've been told by you, so I don't know what can be done there. But anyway, because, you know, our future plan's up there, and also, that's a two, two, two-lane road, it comes off the interstate, but it goes through the neighborhood for the majority of it, and then it's going to go through a corridor of Nakalula Falls eventually. So, I don't know why eighteen-wheelers should use that as a cutoff. They need to go all the way down to Megan Boulevard and get off fifty-nine there and cut it around. They don't, they use this as a cutoff, a shortcut, and it's just, and they get, they get off in those ditches sometimes up on Nakalula, and the people at scenic can't stand them, because they come up there, through the four-way stop, they haul and, you know, going faster than they should, and they don't stop, and they kind of cruise through it. So, I'm constantly getting phone calls and emails and text messages and messengers about it, so it's just something, and it's just happened like twice in the last week, so I thought I'd bring that up, so, you know, maybe, maybe there's a solution for it. And then, my last thing, I did remember, am I, am I not mistaken, sunset sips this afternoon?
Yes.
Okay, sunset sips on the bridge, and I think the rain's going to come through, I think it might be confused, shattered, scattered showers, but I think the sun will come back out by the time that hits, and I think we can see a good sunset. That'll be all, that's all I have.
Do you mean drones?
Drones?
Man, look at that.
Drones, no drones.
Gee, well.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. It's, Councilman Avery showed me pictures of the truck, that's very dangerous, scary.
I was honestly right behind. I was honestly right behind that truck that he's talking about. I texted Mrs. King, because I was like, check this out. I mean, because I'm like, is this person going to get punished? Is he going to get, you know, ticketed for this, or are we just going to allow this to happen? Because he got up there and just came to, he couldn't make it.
He couldn't make it.
And then, when he starts coming back, he gets almost into that guardrail, and then he starts sliding, you know, and I'm, I'm just sitting there, and I keep backing up, backing up, people keep coming towards me, and I'm just like, we've got to turn around, this guy's done, and he's here for a little while. You know, and I'll go all the way around the mountain, come up home, and I'm on social media an hour later, and that's when there's still, you know, the police are there, I mean, it's still, you know, still blocked off. I don't know what's taking them that way, but something needs to happen.
Well, he, he admitted he was, he was taking a shortcut.
Yeah.
And I told him he almost took a shortcut.
Yeah. Took a, took a real shortcut, right? Yeah.
Almost took a shortcut, so. But, the big part about it, in my, you know, opinion of safety, again, on Tenth Street, it always angled at a home that is there, or homes that are there, compared to right here on Eighth Street, you got a little, little, you know, they got a hill they can tumble down there, but just hopefully, they don't get into a home, you know, with someone being home, with that being an older community up there. That's just, it can be really bad, fuel, fire, it can be really, really bad.
Yes, disaster. All right, well, thank you, guys. I'll, I wanted to just mention a few things. We had a successful walk-through time at Forest Cemetery Sunday. Want to thank Michael Rogers, he heads up that organization, and the weather was great, the wind blew pretty hard, but other than that, it was, it was really nice. Want to thank the board members of Forest Cemetery that obviously help and do that, also the, the people that portray the people that are buried there. I don't, Michael, how many, fifty, sixty?
We have right at fifty, plus the backstage performers.
Okay, so right at fifty, so a lot of volunteers that makes that happen, the money that is donations, there's no fee to enter, but what, one-hundred-and-fifteen thousand has been, over the years, has been raised? All that money has gone back into Forest Cemetery, at the handicap-accessible bathroom, the, I think, fixing the roof on the chapel, which is a one-of-a-kind structure, it's just a marvelous place. But, thank you for your work, Michael, thank you for what you do, and Haley, thank you, I know you're right there with him, doing all this stuff too, so thank you all very much. We're, we've bragged on our Flag Girls Football Team, which are phenomenal, amazing to hold all of your opponent, opponents scoreless for the whole season. At the same time, they're having their success, the GAZN City High School Band has had a remarkable fall season with their competitions where they've been. I've been in touch with Mr. Benedetti, and he's going to come in the near future to bring some of his leadership team to come and tell us about all the things they've done. If anybody's ever been involved with the band, you know the kind of work starts in the heat of the summer, learning everything, the music, and then the, the show, and our students have done exceedingly well this year in Pell City, just recently, and some, some other contests where they've, they've, they've kind of won the title everywhere that they've been, I think, three contests this year. So, very proud of our band students, and very proud of our, of our students there. And speaking of students, there was an event at the Walk Through Time Sunday, one of our visitors, patrons, passed out, and y'all might be aware of the Titan, the GAZN City High School Titan ambassadors always work the Walk Through Time. There's about twenty-four of them that are there, and you couldn't do it without them. They, they shuttle people back and forth, they put out signs, I mean, they're just a great bunch of kids. When this person fainted, three Titan ambassadors were the first on the scene, they were right there, and they administered unbelievable care, and in a real professional manner. A lady who is an RN was probably the, right behind them, and she witnessed what they were doing, and she was just blown away, made a social media post, and, and just could not say enough good things about our Titan ambassadors. In addition to those three, there were another five or six that worked with getting the first responders to that location, so, and they were just like true professionals, they were just, I mean, I was so grateful that they were the ones doing it, as opposed to, you know, somebody else. They just really knew what to do, they handled themselves with, you know, they didn't get upset, they, they were under control, and so, I've spoken with the person that had the event, and he wants to thank them publicly. He's out of town this Tuesday and next Tuesday, Mayor, but we're going to invite them probably the third Tuesday, and then have the Titan ambassadors come, and, and school personnel, just to recognize them. It was remarkable to hear the professionals describe it, that know what should be done, they were doing it. And there's a lady that runs the Titans ambassadors, been doing it for quite a while, and I think, I think you're married to her. That's, that's right. Yeah, my wife is the sponsor of the Titan Ambassador Program, and she was. Does a great job. Well, thank you, I appreciate that. She, she does, she works real hard at it, and she loves those kids, and nineteen years of doing it, but she, she was so proud of her, of her ambassadors, she calls them her kids. They, they just did exceedingly well, and she said, you know, she wasn't surprised one bit. She just, she said, that's what I expect, that, that they would do that, and they don't train on something like that, that's just, they innately knew what to do and, and just did a wonderful job. So, we, I look forward to having them here. And then, last but not least, I want to recognize, and I believe this John's sitting over there by Nick? No? John Moore?
This is nap time.
All right, John's being quiet. He, y'all, this is something near and dear to my heart. Over at the GAZN Sports Park, the City of GAZN has put about three million dollars into Champions Field. It's kind of a Miracle League field, and there's nothing like it in Etowah County. Last term, I talked with Mayor Guyton and Frankie Davis about that, they agreed whole heartedly, so did the council, so we embarked on that. Mayor Ford has come in and has taken it to even another level with the things we've done over there, in addition to the staff. But, so this October, this month, we're having four league plays for special needs students, and they're coming from the GAZN City School System, the Etowah County School System, and the Itala School System. So, in, in truth, what we've wanted to do, this is, field is for everybody, it's not just for people that live in GAZN, it's for families that live in Etowah County, or even outside Etowah County, that want to come and enjoy all-inclusive playground equipment. You can get a wheelchair up in there, and so, students and young people can enjoy a playground, but the league play is just going really well. I want to thank Darrell Richardson, who's our interim Parks and Rec Director, and also want to thank, oh gosh, I just went blank, he's going to kill me, the soccer director.
At the.
Philip. Philip Hall, oh no, I can't wait for Philip to get on me about that, I've known Philip his whole life, but Philip Hall is our director of soccer, so he's out there, and he's putting all this together. John Moore has done a fantastic job of, of leading that group, and along with Kim Haynes, who works with the Alabama Pediatric Therapy Services, she's a former special ed teacher in the GAZN City School System, and she's kind of stepped up to try to, to help us organize, and she's a kind of our liaison to the three school systems. And so, being a former teacher, she just kind of knows what needs to be done, so it has just worked out it, it really well. So, we have, I think, two more Thursdays. I want to thank Mayor Ford for the trolley help getting the GAZN City School students there. If y'all could see their faces, you know, these are kids that just, they always have great attitudes and stuff, and I was standing by the gate where you go onto this new field, like the baseball soccer field, and this student is walking up, and she gets about, oh, ten feet from the gate, and I'm standing kind of there at the gate, and she just starts saying, wow, wow. And then, she keeps kind of walking, she's never been there, and she's looking at this field, this turf field that we have there, you know, and she stops, and she, and she wasn't looking at us, she was looking at the field, and she went, oh my goodness. And then, she just went out there and started running and playing soccer and stuff, so seeing that face and that smile on her face was worth more than three million dollars, what we've spent, and every child feels that way. It's open to the public, there's no charge, you know, come if, if you want, it starts at nine o'clock this Thursday, and then the next Thursday, if you want to have your heart touched in a real special way, just come out there and watch, just come out there and just walk around and see what these students are getting to experience. It is just, it's just fantastic, Mayor, it's, thank you for all the help that the administration's given. John Moore, thank you for the T-shirts. We have supplied, the City of GAZN has supplied the jerseys or the T-shirts for all these students. And, you know, I had a friend that has two children, one is special needs, one isn't, and so, the, one brother plays a couple of different sports, he always has his own jersey. Well, the brother wanted his own jersey, he, he never gets to have a jersey, because he's not on the team. Well, that brother now has his own jersey, and it means the world to him, because it's his jersey. So, we don't, we don't, sometimes we forget about the little things of, like that, but it's so important. I'm so proud for the city that we've done this and that we're a, a part of their lives. We encourage those families to use that park as your Marana Park. That's, that, it, it's open, it doesn't cost anything. Go over there, take a picnic lunch, do whatever, and enjoy the playground equipment, throw a ball out there in that field, let your children run around and kick it around and play, that is your special place, and that's what it was built for. So, Mayor, thank you. John, thank you, and all, all that are involved, Darrell and Kim, it's just, it's just a nice thing, so, nice way to end today's meeting, but I encourage you all to show up, come out there this Thursday, nine o'clock, and it lasts to about twelve o'clock. All right, well, thank you, everybody, have a great week. We are adjourned.